For those of you who'd like to stand for the plate.
I pledge. The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, earth and justice.
All right, we're looking good. How are we doing online?
We're good for life.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It is August 11, 2025. It is 5:34. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Silverton Board of Trustees. Melina Rollcall.
Darbison. You Wakefield?
Yes.
Jesse Schnicker?
Here.
Steve Gardner?
Here.
Steve George?
Here.
And for Tim Harper?
Sure.
And Mayor Crinker's absence.
All righty. Do we have any staff or board of revisions this evening?
Uh, we do, but we have two. Um, so you guys can accept them or deny them, whatever you want to do there. Um, but the first one is for a stage two fire restriction. It's an emergency ordinance. Um, and I emailed that all to you and it's printed out. Uh, so.
Gloria and Gloria, sorry to interrupt you. I just sent over a resolution versus an ordinance. Um, which all. You know, that way we don't have to do the, uh, an action, like an emergency ordinance. We can just do the restriction by resolution and it also saves us the publication. Requirement, if you wanted to do it that route, I just emailed it over to you and Melina.
Okay. Um, so we would be requesting to add either the resolution or the ordinance, um, to, uh, four A.
For the fire restrictions?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great to me.
And then the other one is, um, Clayton's requesting to add Resolution 2025-24, a resolution to submit a ballot language question on whether the town of Silverton should be permitted to publish ordinance by title only and fixing ballot title for said refer, referred measure.
Um, for this one, I do see where you're coming from, Clayton, with, um, this ordinance, but I, I do think that the full length of the ordinance should be in the paper, just for transparency, um, for everyone. So I would vote not to have this made.
I'll agree with Amy on that. I do as well.
Okay, so we are adding stage two fire restrictions. And not adding the Resolution 2025-24?
Well, stage two will be in the consent agenda. Right.
Uh, yes, and well, I would put it as a four, no, I'm sorry. Did I say four A? It would be seven A. We do have Jim here to present to you all.
Right. Any other comments? Is staff agenda? Consent? Everyone fantastic. Moving on to public comment. Everyone here, uh, has three minutes. Everyone online has three minutes. There's anyone here that would like to say something? Come on up. Say your name. Address. Date of birth. No one? Seeing no one locally? Perfect. Let's go online. Everyone have their hands up. Melody Skinner, you have three minutes.
Can you actually hear Melody Skinner?
I do.
Good. Um, this has been troubling me for at least a couple of weeks. I generally think when we have something as big as signs at the end of town, it should be more of a community process where people are asked to submit designs. That didn't happen, but I'm going to speak for this again. I spoke in the commissioners meeting, but I'll speak for it again here. The train was built to haul ore. And it's been here since 1881. And I think putting the train on our billboards at the end of town is pretty important. A lot of people drive in to look at the train, even if they're not riding it. They like to come in and see it. But, um, if you want to honor mining, I think you should honor what all haul the ore. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see anybody else. All right, moving on to four A consent agenda.
Just to note in your consent agenda, we do have the full audit posted. It is also posted online. Um, but just to be transparent, we put it in this agenda packet, which made it really, so sorry about that. Um, and then we also do have three notices of decisions, uh, two special events and a resolution. Um, that you all directed me to write last week about the $15,000 unbudgeted to the San Juan Development entrance signs.
I have no questions on the consent agenda.
No questions. All righty.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Beautiful. Roll call, please.
Jesse Wakefield?
Yes.
Schnicker?
Yes.
Steve Gardner?
Yes.
Jesse George?
Yes.
And for Tim Harper?
Yes. All right, moving on to staff reports.
All right, I do have a couple of items to report. Um, so we have had some staff changes. Uh, we have Steve Need is now our Facilities, Parks and Rec Director. Um, and Valerie, um, our Deputy Clerk is now, um, taking over Steve's role as the Public Works Admin Coordinator. Um, so we are now currently seeking a new deputy clerk. Um, applications are due on August 25th. We are also seeking a, um, a custodian. Uh, Mavis has retired, um, after being a town custodian for 30 years. Um, so she started right after this building burnt down and, uh, was rebuilt. So kind of, she did not want a public um, recognition, but that's what I'm going to give her, just a little one, and then I'll have you guys sign some stuff for her. Um, but really want to thank her for her service and, um, the first town bulletin was published last Tuesday. Um, so there's a link in the packet and if you get your meeting notifications, you will get the monthly bulletin. Um, if you need to sign up for email list, you can jump on our website and click on the contact menu bar and click subscribe. Um, I've also drafted a budget timeline, uh, that was presented to the Finance Committee, uh, last month. Um, for our first work session scheduled for September 15th at 5:00 PM. And wanted to double check that time with everyone to make sure, um, I could schedule that out.
Wait, can you repeat that again? Sorry.
Yeah, so that is September 15th at 5:00 PM.
Great. Good work.
And then I'm happy to ask, answer any questions on the staff reports.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment that Tom Bulletin looks great and thanks for the hard work. I think that's going to be a great resource for community members to stay informed.
Awesome.
All righty. We're cruising. Agenda item number six, we have a presentation from Athena Jones, Remedial Project Manager EPA, update on the repository awarded conference. Good evening.
Evening. Thanks so much for having us here. We appreciate you to take ourselves available and introduce some of the new folks who are going to be working on the repository. And can everyone online hear me as well? I think this is on, you guys did your type already, but just wanted to be sure.
They should, they should be.
I'm sure they can. Um, Joy Jenkins and Jessica Dugan should also be online from the EPA, but I just wanted to take a moment to also introduce Julie Babcock from Army Corps of Engineers. She's my counterparts. And then my HGL, uh, colleagues can come in and introduce themselves as well.
I'm Elliot Paditri. I'm the Project Manager for HGL for the Public Works. And, uh, we'll be back in Silverton soon.
Welcome.
I'm, uh, Michael Churney. I'm a scientist and chemist. Just looking forward to getting back out here.
Great. And then I submitted some slides in advance, but they were more of a visual aid for folks who may or may not be more familiar with the NTP repository site. As some of you may know, the purpose of the repository that we've been building at Mayflower Empowerment Number Four is to store the treatment generated solids from uh, the Gladstone Inbound Water Treatment Plant that come out of there. We've been working on it for the last two summers. And I just learned, um, earlier today that luckily we're going to have the same site superintendent, uh, Byron Hartman back, and he is very familiar with just how things work around here and who's who. The only thing is I will introduce him to John at some point in the near future and get contact information exchanged. Uh, great. Thank you for sharing this. You know, like I said, I think a lot of you aren't familiar, but you know, it's side on Monti before. We can go through the next slide. Uh, very important purpose. So it's also lines, this is what we decided, like before we started construction and next slide is what it looks like now. Up on the new trails that you guys are working on. I wish I was a mountain biker. I could go up there sometime, but, um, it's curved because the picture is curved. So, yeah, we have our cells that are being constructed and the first one is here on the west. We're going to try to fill that. This we plan to bring about 300 truckloads from Gladstone to cell number one, and we're going to have a traffic control plan coming out for folks who may be interested in that soon. Hoping to do this transportation in late September, early October. So hopefully the forest traffic will be down. You'll have hunter traffic probably, but um, we're just trying to get the sludge that's being generated this year in volume to sell wind to reduce the backlog. We'll also be looking at on the order of a thousand trucks coming from Iuga Uncompagret Pit in Matros to help us cover cells two and three on the eastern side. And also coming from hopefully a random sand and gravel. So that's kind of the nature of what like we're going to be doing. I have a lot of details about the oh, you know, about the nitty gritty of what we're trying to accomplish this year versus next year. I know I've talked to some of you about a road closure on county two, uh, County Road Two before. Um, but that's going to be next year, so we'll talk more in depth about that. If, yeah, it's, it's going to be a little bit more planning and to do on everyone's part. Here's the folks who are on our team. Um, generally speaking, you know, EPA is running the project. Army Corps are part of this. Our designer is CDM Smith. Hydrogeologic or HGL are the folks running the construction. They're also going to be taking over the operation of Gladstone Water Treatment Plant. And that will have the same subcontractor, which is in Sero. They're not on this board, but they should be. And then ER LLC will be our primary construction contractor. We always keep the state involved as well because they will be taking over this work someday. So their input is very important to us. On the next slide, I included the contact information that I'm aware of at this point. Like I said, Byron was assigned late last week. We're moving pretty quickly. Two things, as you notice, we got a late start this year. Um, Jamil Huber was out last year. He's a great first point of contact from the Army Corps. If something is going on onsite, that's a phone number to have if you're going to be involved with this. Um, and then everyone else is up there too. If you can't get ahold of Jamil, you can always try the government folks. And then Elliot's phone number is on here. Um, and then Byron's will be provided by later date. The next few slides are definitely those nitty gritty details of what we're going to be doing. Oh, no, I don't. Um, you know, what to expect. Like I said, I think from the last two years, you guys have seen the folks working out there. It's six days a week. We do try to honor. You know, the schedule of holidays and big events that are going on. So if something's happening and you need us to, you know, reduce our traffic, we can work with you on that. This is pretty basic for what you'll see. The folks will probably be taking over a hotel in town when they, when they're able to get their reservations set up so they can be here. And on the next slide, just have a lot of comments to keep on, you know, with you all and, um, just so you know, we're going to be transporting from Gladstone to the Mayflower and also importing a lot of them to W. You know, we can, hey, guys, ask us some questions. So we are still planning, so that's kind of that construction ramp up. There's not going to be a whole lot of what's to fill later day. Although you might see a couple of us up here doing some documentation, some survey and calls that's after the Labor Day weekend. That's when you'll see Yar and the other contractors and construction work really ramping up. With the goal of trying to bring some of that sludge and various things from Gladstone near the end of September, early October. Great. Uh, and I have something I need to go through on P5. Some of the stuff that's happening, um, specifically on site. Uh, are there any questions from you? Would say, have no surprises for you.
Yeah, so will there be those long traffic delays from August 22nd? It'll just be after Labor Day?
Yeah.
Great. And then will those delays look similar to the ones last year?
Yeah, like timing, things like that. The order of magnitude and the timing of the work is going to be yours yourselves to use.
Yes. And I guess question for Gloria, these trucks will be subject to those fees on Green Street again this year. Traffic improvement is yes. Great. Thank you so much.
Comments?
Um, could we just pause one second? Fix our audio real quick.
Uh-oh.
I haven't, did I forget the issues today? But yes. All right.
That? Right.
Thank you so much for having us. If you need anything or anything else comes up later, you know, we're going to reach.
Thank you so much.
Very nice to meet you. Welcome back. All right. I know this is business item seven A, but is this more of a presentation?
Um.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, I do have a short presentation from them.
Okay. Yep. All right, that as you guys are looking forward.
Got it.
Okay, so, uh, basically requesting stage two fire restrictions. One sec, let's go through. And mostly I just wanted to give you all a situation update on the wildfires that are occurring in southwest Colorado and just why we should go into stage two restrictions. And, um,
But we're going down to seven. Hold on, there we go.
So, uh, reason for going into stage two is really embarrassing fire danger. Uh, multiple active fires, fire danger indices are all popping up into essentially extreme. So it's very appropriate. Uh, the other big reasons aligning with, uh, San Juan National Forest, they went into stage two on Friday. And, uh, that just makes enforcement a lot more straightforward. I am in talking with BLM, just encouraging them also to go into stage two, but at this moment they're still on stage one. And, um, regional fires, Stoner Mesa Fire in Dolores County, and that's the one that's been causing all of the heavy wildfire smoke in Silverton. Uh, the plume has just hit right over our town. Uh, that fire is also getting very close to Rico, where they've had to put Rico on, uh, state basically pre-evacuation notice. They brought in fire protection, structure, uh, specialists to start preparing if, uh, if the fire hits. So showing what a big deal it is. And that fire is actually only about six miles away from San Juan twenty quarter. Um, also it's the, uh, Oak Fire is also a real big concern that just started. Oh, it was, uh, Sunday and, uh, started in a subdivision in the Pagost Springs area. And just, I mean, it just shows how tinder dry everything is. They had to do immediate evacuations. So, uh, so it just shows we don't really want to play around. So fire danger index, I showed this to y'all in the, uh, stage one, but this is today. Um, these little show, uh, historic fires and what the index was at those times. And then just this little gray bubble, just how essentially close we are to it. So pretty, uh, you know, pretty straightforward. It's very, very dry out there. Uh, the Oak Fire, I don't know that it haven't determined the cause. Stoner Mesa Fire was caused by lightning. So uh, that's, that's just what we have to be concerned with. And the stage two restrictions, uh, they just get a lot more restrictive. Uh, stage two, what is prohibited is smoking outside, operating, um, any internal combustion engine, uh, basically chainsaws or, uh, things that, um, you need to have a spark arrest on, then you can do it. Uh, explosives, no go. Uh, prohibited, uh, motor vehicles off established roads. So our county roads and our established county roads, that's okay. Um, and then welding as well, the welding. The big thing is, uh, the campfires. That's, that's really where stage two bumps it up. So, uh, those are the, um, the big ones to look out for and makes law enforcement a lot easier. If you see a campfire out there, stop it. So any questions so far?
So no welding in town?
That is, you can make exemptions to, um, to them, but it's welding can be done indoors.
Okay.
Um, but if you do want to do or allow, uh, any exemptions.
I'm just trying to think about who that might affect in town. I mean,
Yeah.
I don't, I can't think of any off the top of my head, so.
You mean to specify indoors?
I mean, if they're allowed to do it indoors already, then it's.
Yeah, there's, we don't, uh, the restrictions don't prevent indoors. Um, I do have to say I'll be presenting to the Board of County Commissioners and people who are doing mining reclamation work. We are going to actually try to work in a, uh,
An exemption if they mitigate.
Because it's such a short work season.
Yep.
If they're taking the precautions, giving them some kind of signage, um, because we do want that work to continue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, very good question. Any other? Okay, uh, next, uh, Redmond Ross has, uh, essentially established a team in the southwest to help with the, um, qualifier activity. So they're a resource that's always available and we're in touch with them. Next slide. Uh, with the Stoner Mesa, this, um, they have what's called an air quality, uh, resource supervisor who has been, um, has been implanted with the team. So they're putting out a smoke at, really for the whole, uh, region. So I get this every day and this is for the Silverton area. Jesse, it's Friday night with some of the worst smoke we've seen. Uh, but OEM has been really trying to put out a lot of educational content on how to deal with wildfire smoke. It's going to be persistent with us, really honestly, until probably the snow starts falling. Uh, so we just want people, the community to get educated on how to, um, basically how to handle it from long term. Just examples of Stoner Mesa and Oak Fire, Oak Fire, this really is one of the most frightening ones because it is in a more populated area. The Stoner Mesa is still still out of, uh, kind of out of range, but it is getting really close to me. Um, then next is just always wanting folks to get on the preparedness page. So one of the, uh, I showed the app last time, but it's called Watch Duty. And Watch Duty is what that screenshot showed all of the fire activity. Um, it's free to download and it's a great resource for the public to stay engaged on what's going on. With that, if we do have to do an evacuation, um, we will give as much heads up as possible and we would, um, essentially issue a warning, then it goes to an order. There can be times when we also say shelter in place. Uh, but we also have to just make people aware that it's called no notice, um, incidents where a fire runs so quickly that we won't even have time to alert people. So that's where we just want people to always have that preparedness mindset, especially for Silverton. Next slide. So that pairs also with Ready Set Go. It's used throughout Colorado. It's three stages. Same thing where we'll, uh, you get into these stages, we will be communicating to the public. Basically Betty says, prepare to evacuate, have all of your stuff together. If you're even able to leave the, an area, it's a good time to just take a vacation. We'll, um, communicate what you need to do to prepare your house, um, or dwelling. Then set is basically the evacuation warning. And it means that at any moment we can just say, yeah, gotta go. Then go is, that is an official order. Uh, we will have sheriff's deputies, we'll have law enforcement, um, from mutual aid going through town and essentially telling everyone to leave. Uh, any questions on how that works? So that would be also a disaster declaration. Correct. So classic go kit, um, got the chance board. Um, you can fit in some puzzles, water, blanket, extra clothes, uh, battery, medications, whistle, um, first aid kit. Just anything that you feel is really important. Always think of, uh, your kids and your pets. Pets are always important. So you can make a little go kit for your pets. And, um, have this ready, have it ready to throw into your vehicle. Another thing to include is, um, important documents, insurance documents, passport, um, any documents they can need to basically live out of your home, uh, for an extended period. And that is it. Any other questions?
No questions. Thanks for the, um, presentation. Yeah, I think it's a no brainer. We have to go into stage two. Um, there are just so many devastating fires around us and I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Yeah, I just, I only have a question about the difference between the resolution and the ordinance.
So Clayton, our last, um, stage one was adopted by ordinance and I wanted to double check with you on how this would work as a resolution if we went to stage two.
It would be the same. It's just easier to implement and, and, and change versus an ordinance in order typically is done for permanent decisions and legislation versus a resolution, which is a little bit more uh, flexible. You, we've done them in the past as ordinances and then published them, but that requires every time you do it to do an emergency ordinance. Otherwise you're waiting to 30 days and the second reading, um, which isn't really pragmatic long-term. So I think just as a best practice, it's, um, it's easier to just do a resolution because it has the same effect and, um, the statute doesn't require that you pass and pass the restriction by ordinance. And so I'm just suggesting we make that a little easier for ourselves going forward. And is the language in the resolution that you emailed us the same as the ordinance and we just changed the title? It is. I just took out the emergency clause for the ordinance and I just, I just cleaned it up so that it looks like a resolution and not an ordinance, but I left the language in that. Um, that asserts the, you know, the emergent nature of, of the fire restriction, uh, but not for the purpose of making it an emergency ordinance to avoid. Um, not to avoid, but to, you know, to, so that we don't have to await publication for it to, um, you know, for it to take effect. So, and this resolution will take effect the same way as the ordinance would. And it's up to the board how you guys want to do it. If you are more comfortable to ordinance, that's fine. I'm just trying to make it easier. And the resolution seems fine. And if it's easier long-term, we can just do it this way in the future. And the language is the same.
It's a little bit more malleable.
Yeah.
We can work with it.
What, what number?
Which resolution this will be?
You, you need to write in the number. I apologize. I think we're on 26 this year. I don't know.
We've got five dash.
Well, we've got some other ones on our.
The 23.
Twenty-four.
So this would be the new 24.
Twenty-five dash 24?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-24, Resolution declaring stage two municipal fire restrictions.
Second.
Perfect. Roll call, please.
Jesse Wakefield?
Yes.
Jesse Schnicker?
Yes.
Steve Gardner?
Yes.
Steve George?
Yes.
And for Tim Harper?
Yes. Commander?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also, Watch Duty, I have it on my phone. It's awesome. Um,
Um, thirty five hundred acres, over thirty five hundred acres, stony mesa, zero containment.
Uh, yeah, I haven't looked at the latest, but yeah, that's basically, it is that zero containment. Very difficult terrain, so they do have essentially control points where they're gonna kind of engage in the fire. But they really are focusing a lot on Rico right now and that one forty five four hour. So it's, that's a very big deal.
Yeah, and I recommend anyone have a seventy two hour go bag, always.
Yes.
By your front door, back door, front of your car.
Yeah, yes, downboard, you can circulate that, that would be great.
Good thing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, moving on to seven B. This is the second reading uh, for adoption, ordinance uh, twenty twenty five dash ten. Um, an ordinance of the town of Silverton amending chapter fifteen, articles eight and eleven.
Yeah.
Of the Silverton land use code regarding deed restrictions.
Then would you like to put the resolution, the special election after that next?
Oh, did I stiff it?
Yeah.
I apologize. Well, we'll just do that next. So then. All right.
We run ordinance first?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, sounds good. Um, thank you, yes.
Screwed it up.
No.
Go for it.
Um, yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is a public hearing um, to review the second reading of ordinance uh, twenty twenty five ten. Um, an ordinance of the town of Silverton amending chapter fifteen, article eight and eleven of the Silverton Land Use Code regarding deed restrictions for the expedited review of affordable housing. Um, so at our last meeting, the board approved a motion approving the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five ten. Um, and this ordinance amends our um, expedited review for affordable housing code section to align with proposition one, two, three requirements, specifically moving the ninety nine year affordability period clause to the definition section of the land use code. Um, so that would be listed under affordable housing definition. And adding um, a section to that um, to allow developers to enter into a development agreement with the town in lieu of a ninety nine year affordability requirement and to still be eligible for expedited review. And the purpose of this is to add flexibility um, and to support um, affordable housing that is not deed restricted for ninety nine years. Um, and then of course to align with prop one, two, three requirements um, as we are required to do. So unless you have any questions or would like me to go more in depth on anything I talked about last week, I'll hand it back over to you all uh, to open public comment. Um, and then to go into trustee discussion.
All right, public comment is open. Seeing that in house, hey, how's it going?
Go online, any public comment online?
Seeing men there as well, kick it around for discussion.
I mean, I think we spoke about it last time.
I think we did.
The money that we're getting from prop one, two, three, we, this is, yeah, we just need to get this done. Just more housekeeping, I think, than, anything else?
No.
Hmm.
Anything else? Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten and ordinance of the town of Silverton amending chapter fifteen, articles eight and eleven of the Silverton land use code regarding deed restrictions for the expedited review of affordable housing.
Second.
Perfect. Go call please.
Kristy Wakefield?
Yes.
Justin Schnicker?
Yes.
St Gardner?
Yes.
Justin George?
Yes.
Robert Tim Harper?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Now that I'm around, I guess we'll go to seven.
B.
Uh, this is the discussion, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three. Resolution calling for a special election in the town of Silverton. Uh, the town of Silverton, Eighth and Bluff, Special Improvement District, and providing other details uh, relating there too.
All right, and I am going to take this one off to Clayton.
Beautiful.
Good afternoon, uh, board. This is the continuation of the ongoing uh, process to stand up and ultimately fund uh, the Eighth and Bluff Special Improvement District. The, where we left off last is um, we're, we have formed the SID and uh, we are in the phase now where we are um, needing to adopt the, the table language to go into a ballot so that the affected property owners can vote whether or not they're going to take on the um, debt that is, you know, it's a table debt. And so this has, it has to be put to ballot for the people that are affected, which are the property owners, i.e. the petitioners of, of the SID. As you'll see in the resolution, um, the uh, the language projects um, a no more than total cost of one point five million. And then that three point six million, which is be the interest of paid, um, if not paid off uh, sooner than the, than, than the life of the loan. Typically, these are um, this is the, you know, the next logical step in the process for the SID. If, if you notice in your uh, packet, there is a new uh, timeline that is a little bit more uh, is basically I've just rolled out a couple of the steps that were um, compacted in, in a previous timeline and gave some statutory references as to why we're doing that. So at this point in time, um, if the project is going to move forward, we need to submit the um, issue to the voters who will be the petitioners. And if they then agree to take on um, the debt, then you know, we would go forward with the bidding, the project and um, you know, step six through twelve until the life of the Special Improvement District uh, was completed by repayment to the town uh, for the project funding. Subject to your questions, um, that's, that's my, that's my brief on this. And I can, I know there's a lot to it and I didn't want to over talk it. I would rather just answer specific questions that would um, that would help the board.
I appreciate it. Do we want to discuss it first amongst the board or do we want to go out for public comment prior?
Uh, maybe public comment first.
Sure. Anyone uh, would like to comment on this?
Up to the podium.
State your name and address.
At Champa Lou, uh, part of the SID.
Welcome back.
Obviously, you know, we're just waiting to just forward with the, with the project. And we just, so we just see that as being very positive for this, for the town. So I'm here, I'm not going anywhere. And I know that, you know, I spoke to several other landowners, I mean Jeff obviously do quite a bit. I don't know if he's online or not, uh, he'll be there. Um, no one knows a lot more about it, uh, about the whole process. But you know, we were committed to help the town because when we first approached you guys, we were like, we don't have the, the resources, we don't have anything. So we took upon ourselves to, to hire a lawyer, uh, knows very well all this and works along with the city council. So I mean, we're just, we're just waiting. It's just a lot of processes and voting and ordinances and public. Yeah, so just waiting, but all for it. And you know, when there's going to be a vote, it's probably all, all the uh, the landowners, the majority is for to move forward with the project, so.
Well, thank you for your continued patience and understanding with us.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
Anyone else? No?
Yeah.
Jeff online?
Oh, yeah.
Right. Jeff, you have your hand up, sir. Welcome.
Uh, I don't know if, uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Is video coming through? Is it just uh, audio?
Just audio.
Okay, yeah. Uh, well, I'll just be brief. Um, thank you guys again for the time and adding this to the meeting. But um, yeah, uh, basically this is, this is the next formal step in this uh, lengthy process. So there are still outs, but basically this, this language here has to be put in place uh, a certain number of days ahead of the November election date. So that's where we're, that's why we're here in August, uh, trying to get all these details uh, put into place. Um, so yeah, this is, this is basically just the next legal step. Um, and, and the amounts on this uh, election language are fairly high, but that's because uh, we need to have a big buffer because obviously no one, no contractors have RFP'd for the project yet. So, so, so for the election, we set the numbers high. Uh, they're much higher than the actual estimate. But anyway, uh, yeah, this is um, the next step to get this ballot going. And as landowners, we're all good to go. And um, yeah, I hope uh, I can keep moving this forward. And I'm here if there are any specific questions as well.
Perfect. Well, thank you much. All right, closing public comment, we're going to kick it around the board and uh, discuss further. Comments, questions?
I mean, I'm excited to see it move forward. I just have a question for Clayton. Are you still, you know, comfortable bearing the weight completely, um, getting this all ready for us? For the next steps?
Yes, I mean, the next steps right now, I'm working with bond counsel and uh, the petitioner's attorney to get the MOU in place so that we can get some of the funding mechanisms for um, example for the bond counsel complete before we actually um, before the project's actually funded. So there's a lot of stuff going on in the background. I spoke at length multiple times uh, last week and this week with uh, both counsel. Um, and it, it should, you know, this is, this is the heavy lift until after the election. And my uh, schedule is um, a lot, a lot better now that I'm, I've completed um, a, a few things that I, you know, had to get done in my life um, for, for my military career. And so I, I feel very comfortable moving forward and being able to um, work in tandem with the bond counsel, the petitioner's counsel and, and, and carry this to the finish line here.
Great, thank you.
I've still got some issues with it. Um, first of all, the forty foot wide road, I think is going to be an issue, especially when that hillside develops. I think you're going to see more and more people use that road and find out it's not wide enough to accommodate the traffic. And then I think you'll see where the town has to come in and pay for the widening of the road. And I don't believe that's something that we should have to be burdened with. I think it should be made to town standards to begin with, so we don't have to deal with it at a later date. Um, another thing, I was kind of looking at the blueprints. And I'm not sure that those are designed to the way the town really needs it done. Um, but we do have a new public's work director that understands more than I do. And I hope you've had time to look at the blueprints, John. And if I could ask you your opinion on some of the things that are going on with this, I would appreciate it because first hand, the water and sewer and roads, that's.
Sure, I'd be more than happy to give my opinion. Uh, I dove into it pretty hard into last week and finished it up today. Probably my, one of my biggest comments would be is uh, stopping the water line on bluff and not continuing it through to tenth. Uh, that can lead to multiple water age, water quality, and of course pressure issues and, and all those things kind of cascade. And, and even in winter time, you want that movement of the water so it doesn't freeze. So the, the best design would have been to take it all the way through to tenth. And I think that coincides also with taking the road all the way to tenth also. Because I, I do have a few concerns on the Snowden where it turns into eighth. Uh, going through the prints, having a guardrail there, uh, great. But what am I going to do with the snow in the winter time? Uh, I do have a few concerns about that wetland that is on that corner right there and how that is going to be stabilized good enough long term, maybe not short term, but long term, what, what's that design? What's that guarantee that that's not gonna push that road down? And along with that, I haven't dove into the grades a whole lot. One of the big things I look at is accessibilities for ambulance, fire trucks. When we get structures up there, are we going to be able to get a fire truck up that road? And I think that coincides with some of the width on the road and of course, great. Uh, sewer, i- i- it's, it's all doable with sewer. Pointed out a couple uh, manholes that we probably need to add. Uh, there's, I met with Jeff last week. There's a sewer main extension of three hundred and ten linear foot on bluff. Uh, really design wise, both water was on one side of the street, sewer was on the other side of the street. Those need to be tightened up. We need to keep it in the right of way. And typically we only need state law, we only need ten foot of separation. Other than that, let's get it in the street where we can work on it. Because then I have to worry about, okay, somebody puts up a fence, somebody puts up whatever, and now I've got a water main that I got to maintain. Uh, but really and truly wish I'd have been here about nine months ago.
Me too.
Uh, to, to kind of guide some of this through on some of these designs. But my biggest thing is the water quality up there. And having a loop system is always the best when you have a dead end. It's from my point of view in the water industry, that's never a good thing. Because then we start dealing with water age and everything else. So that's kind of where I'm at with a bunch of, would you mind, do you have that or?
Oh, yes.
That scan, don't laugh at my drawing, please.
Let me go. I'm glad you mentioned this. I was going to ask if we had any visuals, app or?
I, I did draw something up, uh, Gloria. Again, please don't uh, my art skills are not the best.
Said the same about Picasso. Sorry about it.
There we go.
Okay.
Know if I can zoom it in anymore, maybe a little bit. Yeah.
Yeah.
So John did bring this to my attention, um, and we've already approved the plans. Um, so you cannot go back on what we've already approved. So I asked him, what is our solution moving forward? And the, the solution would be the town take on that extension uh, to Tenth Street um, to close that loop. Was that?
Yeah.
Kind of what you had told me?
Yeah, for the water.
Well, water and sewer because I'm, I'm sure at some point that that's going to get developed.
Right.
There behind one property and then of course the street. Because you need a street to, yeah, put all that stuff down, so.
Uh, so to do that, what would the town's cost be approximately?
Uh, tough guess. Depending on footage, you're probably talking a couple hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty. I, 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 I kind of hate to really estimate. I would need to walk it with a wheel, kind of get, okay, here's their, the end of their boundary, what they're going to develop. And then take it from there all the way to tenth. And then that way I can give you a pretty good rough idea. I mean, up here, we're looking at probably two hundred and fifty dollars a foot for water pipe and sewer pipe, um, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Two fifty on each one. And then of course, road, roads. Up two fifty on each one. And then, of course, road, roads, probably the cheaper of the two, especially up there, because you're you're fairly flat and staying on a grade.
So if we did something, then are we setting precedence that the town is putting in water and sewer for residents?
Yeah, it kind of seems like it.
I would think it seems like we are. And I think we need more discussion about this if this is what's happening. In my opinion, I don't think we need to rush to vote this for November, because it was given to us on such short notice. They've been working on it for several years.
Yeah, and there's there's no way to go back and make an amendment to those you know, do another?
Unless unless they wanted to work with us on on kind of making adjustments to the plans, but the plans that they've had, they've kind of moved forward with planning out everything. So they we would
So the budget timeline, yeah.
Yeah, and and Clayton can speak to this too on on if we were to.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what Clayton says. I'm not one to let things stall, but I also understand doing it the right way first. They're having to go back and do it later on.
Seen some of these in other communities where they do the bare minimum. Then the town has to come back in, delay the date and repair things and make them correct. And I don't want the town to have to go through that. That's wasting taxpayers' dollars.
And I do see that Jeff's hand is up. Um give us a second there, sir. I do want to discuss. Clayton, what do you got to say?
Well, I mean, I don't want to get I don't I don't want to get particular legal advice in this setting, but I will say that with a project like this, because the development has been approved, it's not that it's impossible to to change, um you know, or amend what what, you know, how this would look going forward. The issue becomes, how much have the developers relied on the decisions that have already been made by the Board of Trustees? And so you you get this detrimental reliance sort of argument that opens the town up to significant um liability and so far that developers have spent money based on the decisions that have already been made. Um I'll kind of leave it at that. So it's not impossible to change, but it's not a great scenario. And I will say, you know, I've seen in other situations that it can it can be very expensive and then we are spending money on making a developer hole that detrimentally relied on the town's decision to approve a project and they move forward with that decision.
I would think the bulk of the money would have been spent on the design to begin with before we approved it, so I don't know how much was involved after that.
Well, I tend to get off track and go rogue at times. So you guys keep me on track, because if not, I'll start asking questions and going to the public. Because I do want to get everyone's opinion and everyone's thoughts. Are you all okay with that? Jeff does have his hand up. All right, Jeff, what do you got, sir?
Uh hey, sorry, guys. I know this is, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak during this discussion, but obviously you welcome me and I just wanted to clarify some things, because it sounds like there are questions going back and forth that uh we have discussed in the past. So hopefully this is okay for me to uh uh just chime in.
Hope to hear your comment. I know everyone else would as well.
Yeah.
This new information is uh new information to all of us and one that uh I think will benefit the entire community down the road.
So yeah, please.
Yeah, so I've been, I mean, obviously heavily involved in every piece of this in the uh civil engineering discussions with John Sights and with uh the engineer who's worked on all these plan sets, uh Goff Engineering in Durango. Uh and SGM, your contracted engineer, has gone over uh all of these plans. And you know, as you guys know, they were, they were all approved with the variances um most recently uh last spring. So um so yeah, that is all already approved. And as far as uh minor changes to engineering, that's that's something that is still that will happen. Like, there may be a shift in where a fire hydrant is placed. Or yeah, we may, we're gonna have to add a bit of sewer line extension. But that's, that's yeah, where that sewer line is located, John Zar- Zarkeus was saying, obviously, we need to, you know, finalize where that will be. But those are minor edits. I guess to talk to John Zarkeus's point regarding uh creating a full loop of the water main. Um I do understand the the engineering side of that. And I also understand that there are many water mains in town that dead end already. And one of them dead ends at the mayor's house. Uh and I don't, I I would guess that we would have heard if she's having problems. I understand in the long term, it may be beneficial to connect all those into full loops. But I think clearly, these engineering designs uh went through uh multiple review processes and they're, you know, fully approved by the trustees and by John Sights. I I just don't see the the issue right now. If 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 the town wanted to fully connect water lines, that's that's a different project and a different discussion. That can happen in the future. Anyway, if there's if there's something else specific, uh you can call on me if you need to.
All right. Well, thank you much. Thank you, thank you. All right, go back to the discussion. We'll go rogue again, I promise.
Spoken to the engineers around sites about this as well, or?
I have not. All my comments were coming off of looking at what Jeff supplied me as far as the design
Okay.
and everything. Uh I'm more than glad to contact SGM and talk to them about it. Uh I'm not an engineer, but uh have to work with them. So I I'm more than happy to do some follow up on that. You see, you know, they can probably in AutoCAD, probably plot from the end of Bluff Street over to tenth to tell me that footage and tell me those, what they're estimating those costs are. I'm used to costs that are not up here, so that's why my estimation of two hundred and fifty dollars a foot is probably pretty darn close, because I was, we were doing a hundred and fifty in Montrose. So I'm saying a hundred dollars a foot more up here, I I think is pretty reasonable. But I I could follow up on some more.
I would also be interested in hearing, because again, I'm not an engineer. I think nobody here is, so we were relied on them. Um when it came to the design, I would be interested to hear the rationale as to why they didn't suggest that, what you're suggesting now back then.
Yeah. I mean, would it disrupt the process of the vote if we table this to the next meeting?
What's, yeah, what's the timeline? How many, how long do we have to give notice for?
I would defer that one to
Before the election?
Yeah.
I think technically, looking at the election calendar, um so this is, so the board is aware this is being done in in a special capacity, um which is called a independent male valid election. And so our local uh DEO is the person that is gonna be conducting the election. We're not gonna be coordinating with the county here, because the statute specifically says that your local um DEO should do this by independent male valid election. Um That said, I believe this has, the ballot language has to be approved and we have to set it by s- by September or August twenty ninth, so it can be set by September fifth. So it may be possible to pass this offer the the very next meeting, but that would be the last, that would be the very last meeting that we could set this ballot language and still get it on in November. Um well, they're doing it through, we have to piggyback the the normal election, but we um are doing independent elections, so we're kind of like beholden to certain portions of the election calendar. And and certain portions don't apply, but I know that the um I know that that particular September fifteenth, I'm I'm looking at, I'm pulling up the election calendar now, is is a mandatory date. So just for clarity, that would be the the August twenty fifth meeting. Yeah, or you'd have to have a special meeting, correct? I guess my other question would be is it gonna change anything if we've already approved the plans? Do we have any, does it, does it actually matter, like getting a a price for the square footage of the road? I mean, I don't think we're gonna have the budget to build it, so not anytime soon. Is that gonna change, change anybody's decision on whether or not we allow this vote to go through?
Well, just to hear, because you know
Or not even allow it, just?
They they made these plans and, you know, did so much work on it without that suggestion. And I kind of just want to hear again. Um I just get a little bit more information.
Hmm, SGM.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think that would be my perspective.
I don't want to rush into a decision. And I feel like they're, the special district is trying to rush us into making a decision.
Which was your comment last time?
Yeah.
I mean, I I want to see this go through. I'm just now hearing what John's saying and and his comments. I'm just wondering why that wasn't brought up before.
Yeah, to your point, Tyler, I don't know if it would change the decision, but I do think it would be very helpful to hear an engineering perspective. Because potentially there are, you know, pieces of this that we're not seeing as a non-expert
Yeah.
perspective.
I wish we'd had to hear six, I think eight months after diving into this. Because I, yeah, maybe it was avoided.
Well, Ron, you brought this up. Do you have any uh thoughts uh recommended?
Yeah, first of all, yeah, I just don't want to see the taxpayers get hung for some of this uh, you know, special improvement district. I I think that only belongs to the people that are gonna benefit from it. We need to be very cautious about how we do this. So saying that, I would move that we table or reject this resolution tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I I would want to table it to the twenty fifth, I, if we can, I.
And the additional information that you would like is uh SGM's evaluation of of the plans?
And just their response also to the, to John's comments.
With John's comments, okay.
The engineering rationale for a closed dead end system.
And then you gotta add the practicality of it too for up here.
Oh, we we do have a public comment with their hands up, like to break protocol once again.
Sure, we did it once.
All right. Melody?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
When I was diagnosed with cancer, my physician told me, the more second opinions you go to, the more confusing it gets. And I think we're in a rock and a hard place, because you've done a lot of work that's been accepted. And now at this point, you're asking for more, which risk putting off this vote? And I will say, I'm at a dead end. We have a dead end line. My sewer and water come right under the house and that's it. Uh have we had any problems with it? No. Um, does somebody else think we have a problem with it? Not that I know of. But isn't the only place in town that has something a little funky and we just managed to get by with it? Um I really hate to see these people be deferred again. It's gone on for so many years. And um I don't think asking for an, if you start asking for another engineer's opinion and somebody else asks for another engineer's opinion, and there you go. And I think that that's probably some liability to the town to start taking opinions and making changes at this point. I think if anything, Clayton could tell us if these people um would share some of the cost if there was a change to be made. That would be up to them, because so far you have an agreement. And I think you're dancing on the edge if you try to put that off. And good luck to you.
As always, thank you, Melodies. All right.
Quick comment?
So this affects you, come on up.
You know, I don't think we're trying to rush the process. It started four years ago. So I think everything was done diligently by the rules. With the city, with the engineers, with everything. We just want to build homes for ourselves. So it's, there's nothing to do with rushing or anything. We're just anxious to have property on this hill, or we're gonna see the mountains every day in summer or in the winter. So we're not, I don't think we're trying to rush anything. I know the process and, you know, I'm learning a lot. Like like politics, basically. But what I don't think we're trying to rush the process since it started so long, where I mean, the engineering plans were made, what, two, three years ago? You know, and it went through the town, it went through approval, all of this. And uh so that that's just what I wanted to say. And then the other thing is, I didn't know, because I'm not an engineer, although I've learned so much from doing other things with slow hazard and and all kinds of stuff. I don't know if there's a way where it's not budgeted this year, but you know, you 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 end a line and then you decide two years later, that's gonna be part of the budget to continue to, to continue and to continue that the Bluff Street as a uh residential place where we have more homes. So there's not like holes in between, you know, the constructions and then, and then there's like nothing. So I think this is, I mean, I see it as positive. I built homes before, have lived homes before. And my son's an engineer and he'll tell you, we have a problem, you find a solution. That's what engineers do. So if these plans were done by engineers, they're thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's that's good stuff.
You thank you.
And obviously, I have an interest, because
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I show up at these meetings, you know, I
Y'all have been patient and you've worked with us.
I'm learning a lot, that's for sure.
It's a learning process. Thank you. Any more comments, questions?
Yeah, I mean, going into this, I was ready to approve it right away. Um just hearing those comments still, I I I don't want this to be a huge issue for us down the line, where town needs to bear the cost of extending roads.
This is, this has been a long, arduous process. I was here when y'all first presented and it, I think it was three years. I think T was here as well. A lot of these same comments came up three years ago. And um we've continued to pass it along. We've passed, we've moved forward. And I personally like the fact of having someone like a John Zarkeus here with his knowledge, with his pedigree, to sit and say, hey, if we're gonna do it right now, this is what we should do. And having that vast knowledge base behind you in order to say that. I don't want to see this stall out, but at the same time, if we can do it right the first time, and this is nothing I haven't said before, if we can do it right the first time, I want to do it right the first time. It'll, it'll save the town in the long run and uh it'll be beneficial to all. So that brings us back to uh to the question at hand.
What are y'all thinking?
What are y'all thinking?
Say table.
I mean, I wouldn't want to table it longer than the twenty fifth, the next meeting. Um, to move this process along, to keep the timeline. I'm just, I just really want to hear that response from those engineers, your specific comments.
I can feel comfortable with that. Sorry.
And, and I can push them pretty fast as far as to get those answers. And I'll have them before the twenty fifth for presentation to you guys. And if I push hard enough, I might even have them early next week.
Well, I don't mind doing that and taking that and running with it.
And that wouldn't affect the timeline. Um, I'm just.
That won't affect.
And we appreciate that too, because we want to have properties.
Of course.
So we appreciate all that.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's just, obviously it's like a surprise.
I agree. It is a surprise to you and us. Um, uh, we've been passing this all along. But having what I would consider an expert, someone with vast, vast decades of knowledge in this. I want to hear him out. I'd like to hear. I said I wouldn't go rogue again, but Jeff did have his hand up. Then he put it back down. Do we want to hear from Jeff one more time on this?
I mean, I feel pretty okay with, um, my opinion.
I feel very well on my opinion as well.
Goodness. Two weeks.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Perfect. Jeff hands up.
Well, I think maybe. Yes.
Let's do it, Jeff. Why not?
Okay, guys. Thank you. Thank you again. Um, yeah, so I guess, you know, um, like I, like I said earlier, the, the engineering, uh, has been approved, put through the legal town approval process, all of this. The street width variances, John Sykes explained to the trustees during that discussion that we are on a hillside and that, um, you can't go to full town standards on the street width because you're dealing with cotton fill and you create a cliffside on the uphill properties. Um, and regarding any sort of water main, circular water main, uh, well, uh, obviously you had Melody Skinner. You have the mayor who don't have any problems with their water mains at a dead end. Um, so the engineering has already been approved. All we're talking about today is moving forward toward the election. And within that process, there are multiple things going on. So this is why I sat down with John Zarke's, uh, last week is that we need to go over what, what are called red line edits. So we can make minor edits to the engineering that's already been approved to make it effective. Um, creating a circular water main is not life or death. But obviously that's, that's my opinion and that's SGM's opinion and John Sykes's opinion. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say, I guess. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right.
Are they done?
Yep.
Uh, I make a motion that we table resolution twenty twenty five twenty two for the following reasons to wait on a report from the engineers and John will present that to us in two weeks.
We got a second?
Second.
Perfect. Roll call, please.
Trustee Wayfield?
Yes.
Trustee Schnitzer?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Representative Tim Harper?
Yes. All right. I would ask everyone associated with this, thank you for bearing with us. Come back in two weeks. All right. We love seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I conclude their business items.
Well. John, I hope I didn't put you on the floor tonight and ask you these questions. Well, okay. That's why I'm here is to answer questions.
Next we have discussions, direction items. I don't see any. All right. Committee reports, Region Nine Board Meeting, July thirty first.
And so I attended that, um, in Dolores. Um, and actually got to view some of the co-funded projects there. So was, was kind of a two way thing. Um, but with Region Nine, Heather Otter is exiting out to become the Executive Director of SCAP and we have a new, um, yeah. Yeah, congratulations to her and her replacement is Audrey. And she'll be, I'm actually meeting with her on Friday because they're going to start the comprehensive economic development strategies for each community, the SEDs. Um, so you, you might have, I don't know if this board has seen that iteration. I know the last board did, um, get a presentation from Heather, but um, Audrey will be starting that and will come to the board with those priorities. Um, and then, uh, SWORD, um, has been distributed to the area. So that's the opioid response settlement funds. And I think Amy's on that. Um, they have a regional committee and, um, they've opened up their small grants program. So um, those were two of the, the biggest highlights from the meeting. But, um, seeing their GOCO park was, uh, pretty inspiring by the river and also realizing that they didn't have all of the ADA access figured out yet, um, which kind of made me breathe a sigh of relief because we've been really trying on our end for our river trail. And, um, I thought that you needed all of that before you got funding and it doesn't look like you need all of it yet. So, um, we're still working on that.
Cool. Fantastic. Agenda, my agenda item number ten. You turned it into items. I don't see any. Anyone have any additional comments? Do we go to public comment?
No.
No? All right. Let's think. Let's, uh, open it up to public comment. Come on up.
Sat so patiently.
Um, well, I just wanted to thank you, everyone. Sorry, I'm losing the voice. Um, for approving the funding for the entryway signs. Um, and I also wanted to let you all know, if people have any questions about the processes of uh, how we, uh, chose a design and like how we chose to fundraise, uh, publicly, just please send them my way. I think there has been some confusion with some of our community members. And I think it'd be great for them to reach out to someone that's in charge of it. So.
Would you introduce yourself so they know who's speaking?
Yes, I'm Ms. Sarah Moore. Um, I'm the Director of San Juan Development Association and we are in charge of the entryway signage project. So.
Their phone number or email?
Uh, you can, you can me askmore@sanjuandevelopment.com or you can call us at nine seven oh three one six two one two nine. That is our office phone. Um, and I'm probably on the street every single day walking on sidewalks. So just come up to me. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to, uh, make sure that people knew that I'm happy to discuss that process. Um, and then there are two phases, phase one, phase two. Um, and phase two is going to implement some more beautification around entryway signs and things like that. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you much. Any online comments? Seeing no raised hands. All right. I think it's that time. Thank you, everyone. Let's close the meeting at six fifty two P M.
Thank you.